To the Wednesday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Meeting of the Board of Education of the Castro Valley Unified School District.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I I hear there's an amended agenda.
No, and just an amended personnel doc.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Oh, so I get it. I've heard the first and a second. Sarah Raymond, what is your vote? Trustee Lavender Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Gary Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, five to zero. We have approved our agenda. Is there any public comment regarding closed session items? There is no public comment regarding closed session items. Therefore, item one E, we will recess to closed session. We should be back at six o'clock P M Pacific time. How are you all? We're back to the Wednesday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Meeting of the Castro Valley Unified School District. Board of Education, I'm Mike Kuziak. I serve as the president here this year. We have just convened reconvened to open session. Item three A, three B, I need to report out action taken in closed session. And I'm really excited that I have action to report out from closed session. March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, report out from closed session. Board took action to approve the appointment of Ms. Doris De La Torre as the Multilingual Services Director with a vote of five zero. Yay, I hope you're on the line. With trustee Whitaker with a first motion and trustee Raymond with a second motion. And if you know Ms. De La Torre, you know that she's brought so much to our district at Bennoy and also for bringing dual language immersion to our district. And I'm really excited about this. So congratulations to her. I am going to now turn to trustee Raymond, who will read our district mission statement.
We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you. And as I like to point out to folks behind us, you can see our values that are aligned with our mission statement there. I hope you take some time to explore that. It's also on our website. I want to provide some public comment instructions and just as a reminder of how public comment works. We have a general open comment that's going to happen a little bit later. And then each item on our agenda has the opportunity for public comment. But let let me give you some ideas, give you the some background on it. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak blue form on the back table where one of our students is standing or via the Google form at W W W dot C B dot K twelve dot C A dot U S forward slash public comment forward slash and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. So if we have a large number of speakers, we can make a decision to reduce the time period of that public comment. There are up to thirty minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment. But we can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. So please do not be offended if we do not respond to your comments because we will not. So with that, those are instructions on public comment. Let us move over to Mr. Kenny Khan. He is the principal of Redwood High School, my neighborhood school. Come on down. We want to learn all about your high school tonight. Welcome.
Well, good evening, everyone. How are we feeling today?
Good.
All right, this is my third go around doing this. A little more poised, a little more prepared this time around.
And I'd just say, you, I think you remember this. You're the first person I voted on to hire in this district.
Work correct.
So, yeah.
Work correct. Yeah, memorable moments. So I'm delighted to have the opportunity to share our progress toward enhancing academic excellence excellence and student success at Redwood High School. Today, we delve into our efforts to secure program accreditation, strengthening credit recovery structures and resources. And to introduce a pivotal member of our team who will provide some updates on graduation along with some of our PBS school climate work. So typically, I actually, I usually am one of the principals that presents in the fall. So it's almost been a year since we've all seen each other outside of graduation. I know there's rules around slides. Don't put too much noise out there. Don't make it too, right? But I really feel like it's important that we see that even though we're a small program, that we host five different alt ed programs at Redwood High School. Right? Our Redwood High School Continuation Credit Recovery Program, Castro Valley Virtual Academy, Counseling and Rich Classroom, our Roy Johnson Adult Transition Program, our Independent Study, Intensive Intervention, Home Hospital. As it says on the on the bottom, and I always want to make sure I say this in my presentation, right? We provide alternative high school education and community based programming to a diverse population of student learners, each with their own unique set of strengths and areas of growth. I'd like to take this time just to look at the middle, the purple line, Roy Johnson Adult Transition Program. I'd like to take this moment to thank Ms. Maureen Kennedy. She's one of our retired teachers who was a co-lead for the program. For the past two years, she has come back in some capacity as a long term sub, as someone to help onboard new teachers and staff. And so I think she's ready to retire at this point. We can't thank her enough. Also, Ms. Ginger Brown, the consistent co-lead of the program, who's been there, been very incredibly collaborative. And now we'd like to also welcome to our team another Maureen, but we call her Ms. Teacher Mo Gilhooli, who we're happy to have join us with, you know, over at the Roy Johnson Program. A big thank you to our sped department, Ms. Lauren Laplan, in particular, our sped secondary coordinator, for our unwavering support, time and attention. Her efforts at our site and and again, the district sped team meant a great deal to each of us as we worked to strengthen those programs. All right. So this is a really short slide, right? Not a whole lot of noise. Right? But achieving a program accreditation accreditation is a testament to our commitment to maintaining high academic standards and ensuring quality and education for our students. I'd really like to thank Ms. Kelly Abbott and Mr. Josh Wheeler for their efforts and leadership coordinating our WASC reviews. Each of our, it's really rare that you get two WASC reviews happening at the same time. In fact, the WASC panel initially requested, maybe we just do one report. But the the two programs that they were working on are very different. So really want to commend both of them and our teachers, faculty and staff, our students and families who were really present and participated for our site and program visits. All right, recognizing the the importance of providing opportunities for all students to succeed, we have intensified our efforts to strengthen our credit recovery structures and resources. And resources through targeted interventions, personalized learning hands and robust support systems, we are empowering students to overcome academic challenges and stay on track towards graduation. Our comprehensive approach to credit recovery ensures that every individual student has a chance to achieve their full potential. So I wanted to list that on top of their five classes at Redwood, you'll take advisory period once a week. You'll take R T I, Response to Intervention, twice a week. And then on top of that, participation in clubs, work experience, external learning logs, cyber high, after school intervention, contracts. Each and every one of those efforts, right? Shows how hard our teachers work to provide the most optimal opportunity for our students to reach their goals. So I'd like to thank each of our teachers, Ms. Becerra, Mr. Hasselbruck, Mr. Hoffman, Ms. Jones, Ms. Nguyen, Mr. Vegas and Mr. Wheeler for their work as both teachers and community leaders and builders. Quick mention that our wellness program continues to grow, led by Ms. Noah in the revamped onsite Wellness Center aligned with C V U S D secondary sites. We have a dedicated space for students to receive support for social emotional resource needs throughout the school day. At this time, I'm thrilled to introduce to you Ms. Leanne Ruffin, our newest addition to the school program and our school counselor. She brings a wealth of experience and expertise in student support services. And her contributions have already made a profound impact on our school community. Tonight, Ms. Ruffin will provide some updates on our graduation status and highlight the remarkable progress we've made in fostering a positive school environment at Redwood.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. So I am thrilled to be a part of Castro Valley Unified School District. Thank you so much for welcoming me here. Also being a part of the Redwood campus site along with the five programs. I've been fully supported from the staff there and I'm really excited to be there. So this slide represents one or the twenty one so far and counting graduates that we've had. We almost had twenty two, but we're almost there today. So I just want to like point out these pictures because they they are doing a senior quote upon the day that they graduate. So one that really resonated with me was one of that said, never throughout history has a man who lived a life of ease left a name worth remembering. That really resonated with me because our students on our campus have definitely been through trials and tribulations and overcome those obstacles with the support of our staff at the Redwood campus. So I just wanted to like point that out and it was a quote that really stood out to me. So some of the things that I'm doing to help these students get through their adversities and the things that have happened in their school career as well as their personal life is I work with the staff there at Redwood, very knowledgeable, supportive staff to make sure that we are keeping them in the right schedule, just like Mr. Khan spoke, all the ways that they can recover credits and reach their graduation goals with us and post graduation. Another tool that I use is called C C G I, which is stand for California College Guidance Initiative. So it is a wonderful website. If you Google it, it's California colleges dot E D U. But this is a tool that they can use while they're as young as middle school, all the way up into high school and then post graduation to help them plan for a career for two and four year and post graduation. And it's something that can use all the way until they're twenty three years old. So going on to the next slide. Oh, before we leave this slide. So with all this said, another thing I want to bring is honor to those students. All of them are very hardworking, but there are two students this year that could be presented with the K A Shifado Award. That is in memory of my late father, who was very hardworking, his family oriented it, and he really valued education. So I want to recognize two recipients this year to receive that award during graduation. Next slide. Okay, so afraid to put it the wrong way. Okay, so Redwood is a community of appreciation. So this is our Rar Out Raffle Ticket. And so basically, we want to recognize when we appreciate each other. It could be student to student, it could be staff to student, and it could be colleague to colleague. And then every four to six weeks, we do a raffle. We play this obnoxious rap over the speaker and then the students know that there will be four winners. So these are just a few pictures of some of our Royal Raffle winners. But everyone is recognized who gets the appreciation raffle ticket. They're delivered by the person who's right? And then the next one is that we are also very determined to make sure that our students know that we value them, appreciate them. And they're in a place where we recognize when students are coming to school with a positive and do attitude and put in the work to pursue their dreams of graduation. So these are our students are the heads and they are selected by our Redwood teachers. So this is another way that we support our community.
So our student board representative, Indiana, will presenting a recognition to Harmony. Harmony, are you here? Harmony? Dutia? Welcome.
The governance team along with Redwood High School are proud to honor Harmony Dutai as an outstanding student. Since her arrival junior year, she hit the ground running, earning high academic marks and credits. She continues to earn over the assigned fifteen point five credits per grading cycle. Upon graduation, Harmony plans to become a registered nurse. On top of her Redwood classes this year, Harmony has taken medical career classes at the Eden Area R O P program. She has many attributes that have contributed to her success at Redwood High School. Harmony is diligent, hardworking, assertive, well spoken, organized, and truly cares about her present and future self. The Redwood community will truly miss her warm, friendly smile. And we know that she will be successful in life and her college and career pursuits. The governance team along with Redwood High School are proud to honor Harmony Dutai as an outstanding student.
Okay, well, I wanted to say thank you to the Redwood staff. All of my teachers have been absolutely amazing and very, they have played a great part in who I am today and the things that I came from. Because I, when I, yeah, whatever. And I also want to say thank you to my family for supporting me, especially my grandparents. They have made all of this possible along with my mother and my siblings. And yeah, I want to say thank you to everybody and I really appreciate this recognition.
We're going to get comments from the board unless there are there any questions that we have first? I don't think, well, I'm just wondering where the Capri Suns are because I think Trixie was right. So Indiana, student board member, let's let's start with you.
I just want to say like at the high school, everyone like only has good things to say about the program at Redwood. Like, it's really nice to know that like students who need extra support can get it. And there's just like, I feel like Redwood does so much, so many things for our students and that's really important. And also congratulations to Harmony.
So this is the first time I've had the privilege of hearing you present about Redwood. And it's nice for me to learn more about just kind of what's going on up there. I do, as you know, that the campus is full of a lot of things that are happening. And it's all good stuff from what I can tell and from what I'm hearing. And but I really appreciated the way you both really highlighted here for us tonight just the culture of support that you guys are creating there, both among the students and between the staff and students as well. It sounds like a place where success really can be fostered as a result, which I think we can all see in Harmony, who I just want to congratulate and also say that obviously we're a world that needs more caregivers and caring people. And so it's great to hear that you've tapped into an interest, you know, in your own self about nursing and that you've had that opportunity to pursue education in the field already. So hopefully that will be really valuable for you and rewarding. So that's all. Thanks.
I used to say that Redwood was the best kept secret, but it's not a secret anymore. What I love about what we have at Redwood is it's a very diverse campus with diverse needs. From anybody who's like, I'm way advanced to I need online to I'm transitioning into adulthood to, you know, maybe I face some adversity and I need some extra of individualized attention. And the individualized attention is amazing, the emotional supports. Like, I'm just so appreciative of how we wrap around and support our kids at Redwood. So I want to thank you and your staff because I know you all are here. And Harmony, congratulations. We all face stuff, but I'm so glad that you found your way and that you've got a bright future ahead of you.
Yeah, excuse me, I think I'll just say it's pretty much the same as what everyone else has said. And that is that, you know, every student's different and every student needs a different environment. And one of the things that's great about the district, I think, is that we have those options available out there. And even ones like that many people don't know about the hospital school. That with, you know, sometimes students are in that school, so to speak, for a very long time. And if we didn't have that and all the other programs at Redwood, we would be in a terrible situation. So it's fantastic that that school's up there and it's really happy that it's doing so well. And Harmony, I can tell you, I'm married to a nurse and I can tell you being an RN is a great career field. And you're entering it at a really fabulous time because there's going to be a huge scarcity of nurses in particular for taking care of old people like me. So hurry up and get through school. We may need you. Thank you.
So Redwood High School. For those of you who don't know, I used to be a teacher at Redwood High School. So every time I see Redwood, I was in the Counseling and Rich class. It was very hard that four years ago on February twenty eighth, when I sent in my resignation. Or maybe it was February twenty seventh because it had to be by the twenty eighth. And some few days after that was the big COVID hit. And I was like, oh, Lord, what have I done? This is absolutely crazy. I may not have any job at all or, you know. And of course, I had only resigned because I was going to run for the school board and you can't, you know, it's a conflict of interest to be a teacher and also be on the school board at the same time. Otherwise, I would still be there. Well, no, maybe I'd be retired by then, by now. But my heart is always with you. I'm always listening and wanting to know what's happening there. I do miss you guys a lot. I see so many familiar faces and some new ones as well. And I'm glad to see that there's programs and things that I've known about before, but also some new additions that sound really great as well, like the appreciation of, you know, item. I think that's a really great thing to do. That's, people need that. And it's just a great way to be making staff and students and everybody feel feeling good about themselves. Redwood does something. It helps keep up our graduation rates here in, you know, Castro Valley. Without the, all the different various programs that the Redwood High School umbrellas, we wouldn't have the graduation rates that we do have. So thank you all really for for that, all that work that you're doing. And thank you very much, Harmony. Right. I don't know what else I could say other than, yes, I just heard, I think it was yesterday about how we're going to need more healthcare workers, particularly RNs. So you are getting into a fantastic field and congratulations to you, Harmony.
I was looking at our mission statement here. And this really encompasses what you were talking about because a part of it says that we work together to provide a safe, challenging, innovative and culturally responsive learning, as you heard, to ensure that all our students, as trustee Raymond read at the beginning of the meeting, feel respected and supported. And here's the part that really is what Redwood is, to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents. And that's really what, I mean, it's just right there. And that's the beautiful thing about Redwood. And I know you've heard from everybody, but it takes amazing individuals like all of you, the teachers, administrators, the office staff, to create that welcoming environment. And I totally agree with you saying appreciation is much needed. I think sometimes we forget as kids grow up and they, you know, they, that it's when they're little, we constantly try to, you know, do things and say you're doing a good job. And we forget to do that when, you know, with adults and older children. So great program, Harmony. I'm so proud of you. I love how you've taken not just your Redwood courses, but found another opportunity at R O P. And going into nursing, I absolutely, I mean, you'll always have an amazing job because we need nurses and we need people who are compassionate and wonderful like you, self starters and someone who's focused on what they need to do. So thank you. And and what you do at the Wellness Center and all of the work that you are doing to support students. Thank you so much. Great job.
I'll keep my comments brief and I'd be happy to donate for graduation this year. What? Oh, sorry. I would be happy to donate a graduation. Capri Suns for everyone if we want to. So Trixie just is my, I love you, Trixie, for saying what you said. I need a Capri Sun tonight.
We need about a hundred and
But I, you know, when I think about the past few years of what we've gone through as a nation, as a world, what we're doing at Redwood is exactly the type of wrapper on support that our kids need and demand for. It's going to only grow. And it's wonderful to, when I was looking at the slides, there's a lot of kids there who I know. They're, they're, they're kids I've seen grow up and I'm happy that we have a place for them to land, to be successful. So thank you for all that you're doing up there. And Harmony, if I've learned anything in living in California now for over twenty four years, it's like you don't mess with a California nurse. One of my, the highlights of when Arnold Schwarzenegger was governor was how those California nurses showed up everywhere. So congratulations on choosing that career path. I think you're going to do great and I just thank you. Thank you for for shining there and congratulations. I want to offer to you, Mr. Khan, the opportunity to introduce any of the Redwood family that's here tonight.
So as you already know, we have Ms. Leanne Ruffin, counselor. We have Ms. Kelly Abbott, teacher on special assignment, math teacher, special education, C V V A lead. I see Mr. Matt Hoffman, Thomas Matt Hoffman, social science teacher, horticulture, physical education. Also, I believe, twenty five year teacher, committed educator. Thank you, sir. Am I missing anyone? Oh, sorry, Kamani, our, our school mascot.
Kamani.
Our school mascot. Before I lose my airtime, I do want to reiterate about things like WASC. While accreditations feel like more of a bureaucratic process, Redwood has gone up and down throughout years of sometimes a one year or a three year or when COVID, they might have given us an extension. But this year, both Redwood and C V V A received six year accreditations with midterm reviews. And that's, that's big, right? And that's, that's a testament to the work that's being done there. And then, of course, the last piece that I always want to put out there is that, how do I say this? Best. Graduation is really important to us for a variety of reasons at Redwood. And I would say the biggest part of it is we're a small but raucous group. Come up. We show up, we show out. So I want to remind everybody to please come to our graduation. It's the culminating moment of a lot of perseverance, a lot of happiness, a lot of joy. And so as community members, if you want to come celebrate with us, we'd love to have you. In particular, you should know that this was that same group that when it, when they were in eighth grade, the world shut down on them, right? They didn't get to go and follow their freshman year and learn how to high school on a physical campus, right? And so the perseverance and achievements that they've done so far and will continue to do is just, again, speaks volumes of the character and who they are as people. So thank you for your talk tonight.
We have a few more items before we head into a quick recess. I want to hand it over to student board member Indiana.
So at the elementary level in C V E, they themed their library this month, which is Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity and Inclusion. And their P T A also put on a very successful fundraiser on the third. Let's see. Also at C V A, they're having a Wonka movie night on twenty, on the March twenty second. That's put on by the P T A as well. And Proctor is doing a movie night also. And at Stanton, they're having a Unity Assembly on March fifteenth. And they're also hosting a Read Across America Spirit Week. And that was last week at Bennoy. And they're also hosting a Read Across America Spirit Week. And that was last week at Vanoy. At the middle school level, the PIQE classes are starting at Creekside. And the CBUSD Job Fair is from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM on March 16th. That's at the high school. And seventh and eighth graders at Canyon and Creekside are continuing to prepare for the Washington DC trip. And then at the high school, we had elections last week. We're continuing with Sauce Pop. So the clubs are getting a lot of signups for that. Our three-on-three tournament is next week. We're, we're starting to get signups for the blood drive in April. And the Outsiders Play is opening this weekend. So we have teasers on Friday for that.
So that election means that we, do we know who our next student board member is going to be?
We do, we do. Her name is Fatima Sahid.
Excellent. Well, we still have a few more months of you. I'm shocked to hear that there's nothing happening for Pi Day at the high school. That is tomorrow. You need to talk to Mr. Mahoney and just like pull something together. I could. Mr. Fortenberry may kick me off the campus, but I may, you know what? I might bake some cookies tonight. They're circular. Okay. So let's go over to the superintendent.
Yeah. So the WASC visit was actually happening this week on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday at the high school. And we met with the team on Monday. They're very impressed with our students, our staff and the programs. I think something that I heard that made me really happy is the diversity of courses and options that are there for kids. The students love that and people who were visiting was like, there is a lot for kids to do here, including clubs and after school, all sorts of things. So that was great. Just wanted to say a few words because it is Women's History Month. So we celebrate Women's History Month, highlighting the contributions of women and recognizing women leaders in history and in the present. We're reminded of how far we have come and yet how far we have to go. We have more women in leadership positions in STEM fields and in higher education while we witness a deliberate chipping away of women's rights by the courts and through legislation in states across the country. To celebrate, celebrate women, it is important to keep a keen eye on day-to-day struggles ordinary women face nationally and globally, and to understand structural and systemic barriers that women face. For example, wage gap by gender. And, and as you know, there, it also is exasperated by racial disparities as well. For example, we know that women usually make 80% of what men make nationally, but Asian and white women make more than Latino and Black women. And the racial gap continues as women get older. Older women of color are more likely to live in poverty than their white counterparts. And of course, COVID did not help any of this and just, you know, exasperated everything. And when I think about domestic chores to caring for family and loved ones, people worldwide, this was like really surprising as I was studying it, about 6 billion hours on unpaid care work every day. That United Nations reports and, and the Bureau of Labor, as reported, this most often invisible and unrecognized work is mostly done by women who spend three times as much as on unpaid work as men worldwide. This leaves them less time to pursue paid work or professional and personal development opportunities. There is certainly plethora of data about women and what they face. And, but, and, and we know here and around the world, women are creating, discovering, developing, leading, healing, teaching and nurturing future generations. As we celebrate Women's History Month and in the spirit of solidarity, let's remember and pay homage to ordinary women around the world who exemplify strength and perseverance and are steadfast in fighting for justice and humanity. So I, as a part of what I was thinking about is so how do we address some of these things? One was transparency and accountability and wage parity in hiring practices. Two was more paid time off for child rearing and caring for elders. All of this benefits not just men, not just women, but men and everybody in our community, right? Free and affordable childcare, which prevents men and women from going to work, but mostly women. And then free healthcare and college tuition that we always talk about, that universal piece. Recognizing that the majority of single caretaker households are led by women, that compounds all of their struggles, which means they cannot, you know, if they don't have, if there's no healthcare for everybody, then if you're a single parent and your child grows up, also grows up to go to college, it's, you're going to have to pay for that as well. So just a few things in the powerful words of Rosa Park. Stand for something or you will fall for anything. Today's mighty oak is yesterday's nut that held its ground. So let's stand together, resist and advocate for a more just world in honor of women whose shoulders we stand on.
Going to do a gentle knock. Now we are back. We are back from our, our five-minute or so recess. Yeah, or so. Common core math. That was, that's okay. It's in our past. So let's talk about our California School Employees Association and Castro Valley Teachers Association reports. Are any of our representatives from, representatives from CSA's on here? Anyone from CBTA? We are not hearing from our labor partners tonight. So let us move on to public comment for items not on the agenda. Amy, do we have any? You have three blue cards. Do you have any online? They are all in person. Great. So what, let's, let's, oh, do I have the cards? Do I need the cards? Oh, you're, you're, you're going to call them. Excellent. Mr. Solis? Anthony Solis? Okay, we will come back to Mr. Solis if he is, if he'll come, if he's coming back. Mr. Park, you have three minutes.
I'm going to just give myself a timer. Keep track. Thank you, board. I won't take too much time to reintroduce myself. From the neighborhood. And raise a hand who are facing directly to Canyon Middle School. So this is referring to the Canyon Middle School Field Project. Again, thanks to the board for everything you guys do for all children. This came up into our purview and discovered it by some luck because it was mentioned in some blog or something like that. Not a single neighbor was ever notified of this project. I know superintendent mentioned that it was posted at the library, some obscure district I never heard of, a few other things. Yet, again, not a single neighbor that directly faces and is impacted by this school project was ever notified. Again, when I say direct, literally the backyard is right there against the school. After further investigation, in January of 2024, the environmental analysis report that the board approved, we reviewed and as shockingly, as shocking omissions, erroneous information and misguided. So what do I mean by that? If you review the Castro Valley School District and the Hart Agreement, specifies that the hours of use are 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. School hours are 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM. And hard usage hours are 3:30 to 10:00 PM or 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM when school is not in session. But that's the background. That was approved in November of 2022. Now, fast forward to today, January 24 of this year, the environmental analysis was approved. So looking at this approval, it's very clear, hard usage was never considered, not even mentioned. So again, thanks to superintendent and their staff for making time, we were able to actually address this directly at least once. The first one was the lights, right? There's going to be stadium light, not as indicated by the environmental report. It says a single pole and no light after dusk, which is not true. And again, superintendent, thank you again for taking time. It has admitted that's erroneous, right? So again, we have neighbors that face directly to the field. You go outside, turn around, they see the field. There are six lights that'll be on till 10:00 PM every day. Environmental report never mentions that. Again, these are stadium lights. I'm sorry, eight, sorry. Let's count it, eight. Another one. This one's regarding traffic. The proposed project, again, these are directly from the report that was approved by the board. Proposed project would not increase student capacity at Canyon Middle School, would therefore not increase traffic activity at the school site. Moreover, the hours of operation of Canyon Middle School athletic field would remain unchanged from its existing condition. Last time I checked, there's no lights. I don't know how that can be construed as existing condition. Next one. Ambient. These changes not result in increases.
So Mr. Park, we are limiting comments to three minutes. If you have additional comments, maybe you can just email them to us. We can't yield time to another speaker. We each have to, you all, everyone has to speak on their own. But we, the board does appreciate what you're saying. And if you could forward any comments you have via email, we'd be happy to see them.
It's going to be a long one. There's a huge list.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thanks again for, I'll speak.
Yeah. Yeah.
Jeff, for, uh, bringing this up. I just heard about it yesterday myself. I'm one of the people probably as highly impacted as anybody else. My backyard directly faces the field. Um, every night I'm going to come home, I'm going to see blaring lights and hear noise. I want to live in this house for the rest of my life. The quality of my life and my wife's life is going to be impacted for years. It just doesn't seem fair that we didn't hear about it early enough. And so, you know, I don't want to sound petty, but it's also going to affect property values for everybody. One of the big reasons we moved here is we had a beautiful view of the bay. That's going to be obscured every night, or at least impacted every night. And so I just feel really sad that this is happening. Um, I realize there's a greater good and we have to, you know, acknowledge that and support that. But, um, decisions that are made here are impacting a lot of people's lives forever. So please consider that. Thanks.
Thank you. And there was that one, Mr. Solis, what was the? Anthony Solis. Okay. Uh, so that's all we have for, um, our public comments for items not on the agenda. Our, our next item is to, uh, approve the consent agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I have a one, can I get to two? Oh.
Second.
Oh, oh, dueling seconds. Um, uh, trustee Adam, Vice President Adams got the second. Okay, let's vote. Uh, Student Board Member, Indiana Chilton.
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes. This is six zero. We have passed our consent agenda. Right now, let's go into our reports, discussion and actives, action items. Oh, I have to do this, right? Right? Here you, I'm opening a public hearing on the appointment of a Personnel Commissioner. Um, so the public hearing is now open. Um, we have an action item here. Are we getting, who's presenting on this?
Doctor Gosh.
Oh, Dr. Goshu, where are you? Where's the doctor? Dr. Goshu. Can I say that five times? Welcome. I, I heard you have some nominations for us, uh, um, for our Personnel Commission.
All right. Well, thank you. It's always a pleasure to be before the board. Um, so we were here.
Oh, 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 sorry, sorry. I have to close the hearing. But, okay, so we opened the hearing and then we closed the hearing. And then you're here to item B is to confirm the nominations. Sorry, apologies.
So I am back. So on January, um, 31st, I had the pleasure of presenting before the board, um, the work of our Personnel Commissioner Nomination Committee. And through that collaborative process with CSEA, um, the committee brought forth, um, two nominees for the board to consider for appointment to the Personnel Commission. They are with us tonight. They are, um, Ms. Monica Lee and Ms. Vanessa Peterson. And so this is a two-step process in the education code. So on the January 31st, um, the board announced publicly its intent to nominate our two Personnel Commissioners. And so now we're bringing it back for the board to, um, affirm that nomination. And then once the board takes action, that will actually be forwarded over to, um, our State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman, who will actually make the final appointment. So tonight, the board is being asked to confirm the, um, the recommendations to appoint Monica Lee and Vanessa Peterson to the Personnel Commission.
I would just ask Dr. Goshu, um, for those in the audience who maybe don't know what a Personnel Commission is, if you can give us like the elevator speech on that really quickly.
It's got to, I'll, I'll try to make it a short elevator speech. So the, so the Personnel Commission is an independent body that is responsible for overseeing the merit system, which governs how we, um, recruit, hire, retain, and promote our classified employees.
Thank you. Um, do, so this is an action item, I suppose. Do I, sorry, do I ask for motions first than we discuss? Let me ask for a motion.
Well, I will move, uh, that we firm the nomination of Ms. Monica Lee and Ms. Vanessa Peterson to the State Superintendent of Public Instruction for appointment to our Personnel Commission.
I would like to second, please.
Excellent. Um, is there any discussion? I think there should be discussion. Okay, very good.
So I will, I will just, I'll say, and I think, I think, uh, trustee Whitaker probably agree with what I'm about to say. Um, not that I want to put words in your mouth, of course. Um, but it was, like I shared with you all previously, um, and I want to share with Ms. Lee and Ms. Peterson right now. Um, the whole nominating committee was really impressed with both of you extremely. And also, and, and especially like appreciative of your commitment to equity in hiring and equity in labor and employment. Um, and so, um, it was really kind of a pleasure to have you guys both be on that list of, 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 of candidates, uh, the night that we did our interviews. Um, and so I, I personally feel really confident that you'll both be really good additions, um, to, um, our commission. And I see Commissioner Walkerson is here also. And, um, I know that she felt similarly, uh, in our conversations, um, in, in the nominating process. So, um, so I'm glad you're here. Thank you for hanging in with the process, um, and the steps that it takes. And I know that I think we'll all be really glad to have you on board once it's finally confirmed.
So, yes. Um, but I, I, I do want to say a couple of words, you know? This comes from tragedy. We had two of our commissioners die within a week of each other last year, um, which was a huge loss to our community. And we are so thankful to both of you for applying and for those, all, everyone who applied to step up and fill in and support equitable hiring. Um, it's very important to us. And I know, um, I also want to say thank you to our CSEA partners for continuing to work with us and allowing us to be part of the process. It was really great to work with them and just appreciative all around.
And thank you, uh, to trustees Raymond and Whitaker for your work on this. And Dr. Goshu, I've heard many, many reports about how you were in a meeting. Uh, congratulations on, on developing a really effective process. And I know you, you all worked in partnership in doing that. So fantastic, fantastic work. Um, any other words?
Yes.
Trust, Vice President Adams, and then I'm going to put trustee Howard on the spot. He should say something, I think.
He has to, huh? Okay, anyway, I just want to congratulate Monica Lee, uh, and Vanessa Peterson. Both people I know and I appreciate very much, and I know will really do an excellent job. I think I've known Monica about five years. I've known Vanessa longer because she used to be our secretary up at Redwood High School, um, that I worked with. And I always thought that the, um, high school, uh, secretary was one of the most important people on the campus. They always knew everything that was going on. So, and Vanessa was that person. So thank you, both, both of you for, uh, taking up this, uh, position on the Personnel Commission.
Congratulations, Vanessa. It's great that you're joining that group. Uh, and I've known Monica Lee for, I'm not sure how long.
Too long.
By saying too long.
Too tell, too tell.
But I'm glad, Monica, I'm glad to have you back where we can throw stones at you and enjoy your, uh, wisdom. And, uh, I know you'll do a great job on, both of you on this commission. And it is really, um, an important thing. We're one of the few merit districts in California. That's, in other words, we're a civil service-like organization. And I think it, uh, it's just a great thing to make sure that every, that the playing field really is leveled for everybody. So thanks for coming up and replacing two terrific people who were on that board before. I know you guys will do a great job. So congratulations and look forward to hearing from you in the future. Thanks.
Anything from our superintendent? No.
Oh.
No, it's, oh, audience, any, oh, we have something from the audience. If you could please fill out a blue card for the official record, I'd appreciate it.
You are part of the commission, so.
Is she allowed to address?
Yes.
Okay, very good, but never mind.
Yeah, that's different. She's part of the process.
Okay, sorry.
She was on the panel.
New blue card, sorry.
I just wanted to thank, um, thank everyone, uh, for getting this process going and, and, uh, and happy to have two wonderful new commissioners to work with. And, uh, they've got some great shoes to fill and I know that they're up for it. So, um, anyway, I thank everyone that worked on all of this together. And, uh, I just look forward to it. I just thought, well, it's a public hearing, I'd take the time to stand up and say something. So thank you.
And now our superintendent.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, just so happy that this process was as I know it wasn't easy, but so thoughtful and thorough. And I know that, um, Tony, um, I know that she was really worried to make sure that the right thing happens. And I just want to thank you for, for all of your support, Dr. Goshu. And then we have three amazing Personnel Commissioners. So we need your pictures, by the way, the two new ones up there. Thank you.
Well, it, it really warms my heart to see our two candidates here. Um, both of you have, are, are part of the broader Castro Valley community and the Castro Valleyified community. And thank you for, for joining us in, in service to, to the district. Uh, with that, let's hand over and let's, let's vote. Shall we vote? Excellent. Um, this is, is this, this not, this isn't a personnel matter, no? It's a, it's an appointment matter. She can't do it. She can't do it. Okay, well, you're not doing it. So let's go to trustee Raymond.
Uh, yes.
Uh, trustee Whitaker. Uh, trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Enthusiastically, yes.
And I'm more enthusiastically, yes. Uh, five, zero. And, well, we can't say congratulations. Tony Thurman still has to do his thing.
Do it, yeah.
So hands a needle. So, uh, thank you very much. Uh, let us go to our next item, uh, 11C, update on ethnic studies.
So we welcome our awesome District DEI Coordinator and one of our fabulous teachers.
Hello, um, to the board, cabinet, community members. Um, we are here to give you an overview so you can know where we are in our, in our process for the ethnic studies program. So as you all know, we are in year two of this, uh, process. And, uh, we are at the point where we have multiple programs that we are working with. But what I want to do is start with just a little bit of a review of why we are where we are. So we know that really students wanted this course before it was mandated. They pushed particularly those of the high school. We know that district leadership also pushed and wanted this program. And then we had AB 101, which mandated it for the class of 2930. So the purpose of ethnic studies is really to allow students to see themselves in the curriculum from their community's perspective. Often, we have other people telling the story of the four main, uh, disciplines that are taught in ethnic studies. And that's the African-American Black experience, Latinx experience, Asian-American and Native American Indigenous experience. And so that is the focus of ethnic studies in general and the focus of our, our programs. And so the data continually supports ethnic studies, really for all students. Um, it shows that really there is a better sense of efficacy, efficacy, a better sense of belongingness, as well as critical thinking skills, agencies, and cross-cultural understanding and awareness, which benefits, of course, all of us in terms of where we want to go, um, as a community, as a world. So, uh, part of our process was to create the Ethnic Studies Community Advisory Committee. And so this committee is made up of parents and students and college professors and, um, various community members, really all with the same goal of making sure that we have a true, honest, respectful curriculum that's inclusive and, um, teaches those things that sometimes our other curriculum does not teach. This is a, a committee that's been working together for the last two years. The first year was focused mostly on the eighth grade course. This year, we have just started looking at the ninth grade course. We'll continue that into next year. And also they're helping us with our evaluation process. So we have created surveys for our students, for our families, so that we can really hear in real time how this, um, program is impacting our, our students and, and families. And we can tweak our curriculum for that, based on that. So, um, we're going to talk tonight about the sixth grade course, which we're in our second year pilot for both middle schools. The eighth grade course, we're in our second year pilot for both middle schools, even though Canyon actually has had the course for three years. And then our ninth grade course for the first year of a partial pilot, which means that some of our students have been in that ethnic studies class. Some of our students have been in the CCG. So, um, what I want to just reiterate is this is a program. These are courses that are created by our teachers. Our teachers, many of our teachers actually have gone through and are in the process of going through the San Francisco State Ethnic Studies Certification Program, so that they can better create this curriculum. We also, uh, have worked with content area experts. So really this is a labor of love for all of our teachers, making sure that we create curriculum that is respectful and, um, that our students really are impacted by. So Chrissy Emmons, who is our Ethnic Studies TOSA teacher on special assignment, will talk with you about our sixth grade and then our eighth grade course.
Hello, this is different than being in front of the classroom, so hello. Um, so really excited to talk about the sixth grade course. So this is a very, it's a foundational course as a way to support the eighth grade class, which goes a little bit deeper, more of a historical, um, piece. Um, so the sixth grade course is both at Canyon and Creekside. Um, at Canyon, it is, uh, by quarter. So the teachers will have, there will be four cohorts of kids. And at Creekside, it'll be, um, uh, trimester, I believe. So let's see, three, um, cohorted kids. And really the class is, as I said, meant to be a foundational class, where they're going to spend a lot of time, um, looking at, um, concepts related to identity. Um, so students will get a chance to explore their identity, uh, with the hopes that they'll take that with them into, um, eighth grade, um, so that when we have our identity unit, we go a lot deeper. And so they already have a lot of that foundational, um, basic knowledge of what, what factors make identity. Uh, we also look at, um, different concepts, uh, related to, um, experiences, um, the different communities as ethnic studies, um, looking at, um, Latinx experience, uh, Blacks, the Black experience, API experience, and Native American experience. But we're looking at it through the lens of hearing stories. And so a lot of the anchor, um, books that this, that the sixth grade uses are children's storybooks that are told by authors from those communities, talking about various experiences that, um, that, you know, stories that might be for younger children, but they have a message that sixth graders can, can learn about. So maybe not necessarily relate to, but find ways to understand and show empathy, um, and learning. And through what they learn, um, from those messages from the books, as well as through their, understanding their identity, they're also looking at allyship, how to be an ally, um, by, and to be able to, um, you know, speak up or use their voice. And so this is, uh, and I'm sorry, another text that, um, this, both classes, you, or both, um, schools use, is, this book is anti-racist. It's a journal. It's a very kid-friendly book that really helps students to have discussion questions about what's going on, but at a level that is, um, uh, that can connect to the sixth, sixth grade level. And this is just some examples of student work coming from the sixth grade class. You'll see examples of students, um, learning about their identity and taking opportunity to share. Um, and then as well as spending time towards the later end of the class, um, how to be assertive, how to have a voice, find their voice, use their voice, and how to be an ally. And so next steps for the sixth grade class, um, review and tweak, um, content, uh, based on student survey data and teacher observation. So as, uh, Ms. Eagles mentioned, that there is data, um, there are surveys that students are taking. So we can see what students are coming in with, in terms of what they already know, and then what they're walking out with, uh, from the class. And in, what's going to be beautiful about this for next year, is that the first group of sixth, the sixth graders who went through, um, this two years ago will be eighth graders. So they will, we will really have an opportunity to see, you know, the benefits of having an identity and cultures class at the sixth grade level, um, going into eighth grade. Um, so next year, uh, so they're still going to continue to pilot, um, next year. And then we'll, um, uh, go to the board. And then we'll go to the board at the spring, in the spring of 2025. And this takes us to our eighth grade class. It's a little bit of a different setup compared to the sixth grade class. This is actually, it's really beautiful that it can coincide with their US history classes because it is more historical-based. As you can see, so we do have an identity unit soon. So the idea is, you know, from sixth grade, with those students coming in from the identity and cultures course, that they'll have a lot of stronger foundation and identity. And again, we can go deeper in content. And then in the eighth grade class, we also, it's, as I said, it's, it's based historically on, based on experience. So we have our Native American studies, we have our black studies, our API studies, and our Latinx, Chicanic studies as well. And in those courses, they, in each of the sections or those units, they connect with origins, immigration and/or displacement, concepts of oppression, as well with resistance and activism and solidarity. Some of the texts that we use, we use Ronald Takaki's A Different Mirror, as well as Making of Asian America, Indigenous Peoples' History of the United States, and Harvest Empire, as well as connecting with various content experts, as well as from a little, what we learned from our San Francisco State course, because we know that, you know, there's a lot of information out there and it's, you know, constantly evolving. And here are some examples of student work. Do you see examples connected to some of the different units? Related to our Native American units, learning about land acknowledgement, microaggressions, students practicing the RIR protocol, learning how to do that. Examples of how students see themselves and their identity versus how they are viewed. And then learning about some of the larger concepts of what oppression is. And next steps for the eighth grade class, continuing to look at data. We've been finding some really, really, really valuable data coming from students who are being very honest and thoughtful and meaningful in what they have learned and providing really strong, you know, just, you know, thoughts. So that's been really, really appreciate that. And then again, with the hope that next year, you know, we're really going to get a chance to see how, you know, the sixth grade course and the eighth grade course, kind of how they like blend together. And then eventually go into supporting the ninth grade, ninth grade course.
So our ninth grade course is the course that's actually mandated. And so the other courses are, are a lead up to this class. So by the time they get here, they will have a, some level of understanding. So being that it's only a semester class, a lot of it can be the, the major content focus. So, um, this class is taught thematically. And so instead of focusing on the four groups in a kind of distinct kind of way, it really looks at themes. And so with this, and I'm sure you all know, but just in case you don't, with yours, you can actually click on each of those and then you'll get a, a bigger picture. Great. And you'll get the bigger picture. So, so you can see it. You don't have to try to look at it. So the main themes are the importance of the history of ethnic studies, self and identity, oppression and resistance, migration and displacement, transformation and change. And they also use the anchor text of Ronald Takaki, A Different Mirror, as well as all of the other resources that they're getting from the classes and other texts that fit the class. And so the next slide shows a little bit of the work around identity. They do some work around using political cartoons to teach some of the concepts. So, um, we're really excited that next year, all of our students will get a chance to be a part of this class. And so this year, they'll continue to tweak the content, which is really a regular process. So they'll do that, look at the student data, hear from all of our, our various stakeholders, 2024, 24, 25. We'll have the full ninth grade pilot and then we'll submit the course to the board in the spring. That's it.
Thank you. So this was just an information item. We are not taking action, but I see that colleagues on the board would like to make some comments or have questions.
I have a comment.
Trustee Whitaker.
Ethnic studies is something that was really big on my mind and something I really pushed for. I have to say that, you know, and I'm a broken record to some of you. I've talked about it a lot. You were here when I talked about it a lot. But, you know, we live in a globalized society. We all know this. And we have 50% of the venture capital here and we want our kids to succeed. And working in the corporate world, I know you have to get along with other people. And being able to teach our kids to learn and understand and empathize and relate to and see themselves and understand, because American history is pretty dark, right? And the, the way that we've oppressed people has really harmed societies. And our kids are living with it today. Communities are living with it today. People have been marginalized and we see it every day. And this fits with our mission of being culturally responsive, about being anti-racist. And I do want to think, mention, you know, we are on Aloney Tribe land. And to recognize the lived experiences of the people that were here before us and what they went through is so imperative to our future. So I love that we're continuing this work. I love that we're being intentional and exclusion in any form is exclusion. And I'm so proud of everything and all the work that our teachers are doing to build out something that is meaningful, to help create empathy, understanding, and lift up our students so that we can have a better world, that it has less conflict, more collaboration, and that hopefully people can have better lives. So get off my soapbox, but I'm so appreciative of everything that you're doing.
Ms. Kayir, I'm sorry if I got the order of operations. If there are public comments, does that come before our comments? Are there any public comments? No, okay.
I don't know what.
Oh. Oh, okay. We'll get them. That's fine. Sorry about that. Okay. So let's, we'll, okay, Indiana. Sorry.
Um, I just wanted to say, I'm in the Afrocentric English and History class right now and it's best classes I've ever been in. But at least three times a week, you know, we're in history and the teacher says, who learned about this in CCG or who learned about this in eighth grade history? And there's just so much that is missed that's essential to not only the learning in the Afrocentric program, but should be essential to the entire history program at the high school. And I've, it's, the ninth grade course is happening this year, right? Like there's a
Some students are taking this year, but next year all ninth grader.
Okay. And I just think that's so important and it will honestly get more recognition for programs like the Afrocentric program at the high school. And I just think there's such a misconstrued lens of history. And I love that there's programs at the high school like Afrocentric and now the ethnic studies class that students are required to take and can choose to take. So, yeah.
Vice President Adams.
Yeah. So as an SDC teacher, you know, you teach everything and I had to teach CCG. And this class, the ethnic studies, just speaking from a teacher viewpoint, is so, so much better. CCG is kind of lame. It's like you have 18 weeks to try to cover the entire world, every single country, every single capital. It's, it's like sort of like this flyover thing. You know, you fly over and you don't find out, there's no depth. There's no really knowing anything about any culture very much. There are some, of course, great social studies teachers here in Castro Valley that can make any class great. Okay. But generally, overall, CCG is just, yeah, it's not it. This is it. This is really what our students should be doing in ninth grade. It's so much better. And of course, um, it has a, a great purpose, right? You know, we want diversity, equity, and inclusion in our classrooms. We want everybody to feel that they belong. When they feel they belong, they succeed. And that's what we want.
Two public comments. Okay. So I'm going to make some comments and have some questions. Is that cool? Yeah. Um, so my comment, I mean, is simply that I, I appreciate the work on this. I, to ethnic studies, ethnic studies to me is very much California story on a macro level. I mean, it was, it was founded at San Francisco State. It's really heartening to hear that our staff are going there to get their credentials. On a micro level, I, I see this, I really go back to the storytelling, right? There's so much to be learned and how other people tell their stories. And I think it empowers all of our students, regardless of their background, to be empowered to tell their own story. And I appreciate at the age that these kids are, they're exploring their identity. Who am I? Why am I? Where am I going? So I, I appreciate how this is a very, pretty much rooted in who we are as Californians in empowering our students to help find a pathway for themselves. I'm curi-, I, I appreciate that when we started out with ethnic studies, it, it started out with quite a bit of scrutiny, right? I, I wanted to hear about a little bit, what type of guardrails we have in place in terms of kids in the classroom and we're dealing with a controversial, what might be seen as a controversial issue. How, how do we negotiate that? How do we sort of protect kids to understand like this is a space to sort of provide their own point of view, but also respect the views of others? I, I'm just wondering, it just seems like there could be, uh, they could be very sensitive in this space. I'm just curious about that.
That's a very important question. And in order for us to have a meaningful ethnic study class, there has to be community building. That is a very huge component of the core at all levels, sixth grade, eighth grade, and ninth grade. We can't have, you know, challenging conversations that can be uncomfortable. They will be uncomfortable and we need to build that, build that community, that safe and brave space to be able to know that whatever we say is being heard, maybe not agreed with, heard and provide the opportunity to do so. We also know that middle school, you know, level especially, everything's learning. So there's going to be a lot of constant community building and, you know, reassuring each other that, you know, that you, you have the opportunity to use your voice, but if you're not there yet, that's okay. And so again, I'm just going to say the community building piece is, is a huge one for all of us.
I, do we have any, just anecdotally speaking, when you look at the middle school classes and this year's cohort of the ninth grade, how, how's it played out? Like when, you know, has it, I mean, do you have kids fighting with each other? Or do you sort of see an empathy building? Like, I didn't think that we could have a common understanding. I'm just, I'm just curious to know anecdotally, kind of maybe what has come out of the classroom.
So Chrissy is currently teaching the eighth grade.
Yeah.
So I'm going to let her.
To be honest, so we've had it at Canyon for three years. I have honestly not seen any kind of arguing of any kind. If anything, it's more eye-opening. It's more of, I, I did not know. I might've lived in my, my bubble and I just, I didn't understand why things were happening because of X, Y, or Z in the past. So it's more of that piece, not so much of arguing or trying to impose one viewpoint onto another. And that, and that, that's all three years.
Just my last question. I, I know at the middle school, it's optional, right? So it's not, it's through the wheel or it's not option. Okay. Do we, are we having any issues with families saying, I don't like this. I don't want my kid in this class. And how do we mitigate that? What's the conversations we're having? And I know it's, it's, it's a graduation requirement mandated by the state of California. So that, that would be a problem at the high school level. But how do we, what are the conversations around that? Have we received parent feedback at all? And have we been able to sort of have conversations with parents to, to maybe win them over to what, what's happening?
So in the, for the sixth grade class, it is a part of the wheel. All sixth graders that are in that will get the course. Eighth grade, that is the elective class. So like I was saying earlier, we do surveys. And so we have surveys of our families. So they do have the opportunity to talk to us that way, as well as talk directly with site staff. I have actually only heard of one. Normally when it happens, it gets kicked up to me if there are some additional questions. In general, when people have questions, it's often because they don't truly understand. And there's a lot of stuff going around. They hear stuff on TV. They hear, they hear stuff from other people and it's not always accurate. And so normally when they can see the syllabus, they can talk to the teacher, they can talk to admin. We can have conversations. There's a better understanding. And so the one that I was a part of, it really had to do with some difference in, in views. But we see hundreds of kids. And so to have one or two that I know of really speaks to in general, the need and that our community understands the need and they really embrace the courses.
Thank you. And I look forward to you all coming back later. Thank you so much.
I was going to say, I mean, it's not unique to this course. I mean, even in elementary school, we may have a, you know, a family who says, I don't want my child to read that book. And oftentimes it is exactly what you described. And then working with them and, and saying, okay, this is what it is. And oftentimes it's like, oh, I, I see now. Or there's another option. So, yeah. I, I will after, I think we have two public comments.
Public comments. Ms. Kayir. Welcome to our meeting, Mr. Templeton. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I hope to not use them all. So thank you all. Good evening. It's good to be here with you. Thank you, President Kuziak, for your, your questions and putting these ideas and thoughts and concerns on the table, because there's obviously concerns that we have shared in the past. What I want to do tonight is maybe reflect a little bit more about what I'm seeing a little in the world right now and experiencing a little in the world right now. And what I hope our class ends up doing to help make the world a better place as our students now, we're taking it, are going to go off into the world and then be part of our local community. So the first is around compassionate dialogue and how we have those conversations. And I want to acknowledge Superintendent Abadi, who has arranged for a class through the CV Alliance to be taking place. So I'm looking forward to participating in that class and learning. And then, you know, hopefully, you know, our students can have that same level of support as they go through this, so that they can have these difficult conversations and do it in a way with, with less judgment or without judgment, with seeking to understand. And that really gets to the, the second hope that I have for this class. And the phrase that I heard that, that resonates with me and that, that I try as best I can to, to live up to is to engender a high quality of ignorance. And what that means is that we're going to learn a lot of history. We're going to understand more. We're going to gain more knowledge. I certainly have gained more knowledge, both actually through some participating in the class. I learned some stuff through the, the board meeting or the meetings we're having. And to be open-minded and understand that, you know, I don't know everything. No one else knows everything. And to have that ability to say, that's okay. That doesn't make me a bad person. Doesn't make anyone a bad person. And to have our students understand that they can approach those disagreements with curiosity and compassion first, rather than with some of what we have experienced recently. So there, there was a recent incident at UC Berkeley where a protest turned violent and students were injured and property was damaged. And that's the type of outcome that we don't want. What we want is to find a way for how can these students engage with each other, figure out how they can understand each other's perspective and what ways are there possibly for them to move forward? So I would just want to express that hope to this group as part of the things maybe we can look for as the, as we assess how the class is doing. In addition to, I think, many of the other important outcomes that Ms. Eagles and Ms. Edmonds already pointed out. Thank you.
I'm going to call up Julie Greenfield, comma RN, to the podium. Ms. Greenfield, you have three minutes.
So thank you very much, all of you and, and you too. I, I think that this program that's being developed, the ethnic studies, is very exciting. And it, it sounds really great. I wish that I had had it when I was a kid. And in fact, when I was in high school, we, you know, we went on strike and we, I went to San Francisco State actually, and I'm teaching there now. But we really tried to get whatever we could of ethnic studies and these kids need it. And it is, it is a wonderful thing. As you know, when it was first introduced a little over a year ago, we had concerns. I'm speaking as a member of the Jewish community now. And just because of the world right now, there's a lot of fear out there. And I'm, you know, I don't know how, if it's being addressed or anything, how it's being addressed. And I'm, you know, I don't know if it's being addressed or anything, how it's being addressed. It shouldn't be a main part of ethnic studies, I don't think, at all. But I just want to let you know that there's, people in the community are still very concerned and very worried. And that I hope that you guys will use the Community Advisory Committee to the utmost extent that you can and keep communication open. Because, you know, I'm getting the feeling that they don't really know a lot of the details. It sounds wonderful, but we're hearing mainly generalities right now. And I can't even see, you know, because I'm sitting there, I don't have access to even see what you're seeing or click on anything. But anyway, please keep the community informed and, and work with us. We're partners, we're part of you. You know, my kids went to school here and I still live here. And, you know, I care about all the kids in this community. And so use us, we're part of you and we want to be helpful and positive. And that's it. Thank you.
You very much.
Yeah, so just a couple of things to wrap, yes, please, if you have any more comments, and then I'll wrap it up.
Sure. So a couple of quick things. Jeremy mentioned the compassionate dialogue, which that is the RIR protocol that Chrissy teaches in her sixth grade class. And it's absolutely a great idea to have our students understand that. Because we know that there are students that come in with lots of different ideas, lots of different experiences. And for them to be able to have a conversation and then end it and not be at polar opposites, that is absolutely our goal too. Because we know the purpose of ethnic studies is for us to be able to see and work towards a better future for everybody. And if we're just polar opposites and we can never come together, then that's impossible. So absolutely. In terms of what we share with the ESCAC committee, last year, we were able to really share actually quite a lot of detail about the eighth grade class, because it was the second year of it. And Chrissy really had spent quite a lot of time with it. She had actually taught it. This year, this is the first year that the curriculum has been created. It has only been taught for a semester once. And so what we've shared with the committee is that we're going to do an overview this year so that they can see the themes, the, we're going to actually have a teacher come to the committee meeting so that if there are questions, they can ask those questions. And then next year, they'll be able to see more detail. We don't want to expose our teachers to so much criticism before they really even have a grasp of the content, because it's always changing. And so that's really our process. We're really happy that many of our members have been with us since last year. And hopefully they'll continue and they'll learn more and more as we learn more and more and create the curriculum.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank you, Ms. Eagles and Ms. Edmonds. You guys are phenomenal. We have incredible teachers. When I ask students, what's your favorite class? What kind of class do you like? I'm telling you, this is the kind of thing they mention. They're engaged. They, they love history. They love this kind of thing, because they can connect it to their lives. They can, for all the reasons you said, ethnic studies is important. We have teachers who spend a lot of time. This is their profession. This is their expertise. I might know a lot about something else in another profession. This is their expertise. And to your point, we need to allow them to do their work. And there is a process when it's finished, besides what you have actually have had in place, which doesn't really exist for every kind of curriculum. We don't have, what do we call it? I forgot the name, the community, ESCAC.
Community.
Community. We don't have that for math, for science, for history. We don't have that. But we do have teachers who work on these, the curriculum. And they bring it to us because they are the experts with all of the things that everyone said in mind, because we're here to make sure that kids are learning. But they also know that we love them no matter what, no matter what their opinion is. So that's, that's why there is that process. And then when it's piloted, it's to figure out all the things that might not be perfect. So that when we bring it to you as this is our curriculum, we've gone through that. And then there's a, there's a time where we actually have it available for the community to look at, and you get to decide in the end where that goes. So I just want to make sure that our, you know, everyone who's hearing and here knows there is a process and you will see all of that. We're actually taking quite a bit of time piloting, because we want to make sure this is absolutely perfect, absolutely perfect. I want to say, everyone said it, including our speakers. It's about telling the truth. It's about history. It's about facing our history. If we don't own our past, we can't move forward. And yes, it will be difficult at times for kids. That's why we got to create that community that you create in school. And, and there are consequences where, you know, something might happen and a student might make the, you know, a comment that's inappropriate. We have amazing teachers and school staff that will deal with that. I just want to say, again, there are all these things in place to make sure that we create that kind of community that kids can actually learn. And I always am reminded of, I actually have this as my signature for people who have ever emailed me, that like Nicole Hannah Jones says for the 1619 Project, none of us can be held responsible for the wrongs of our ancestors. But if today we choose not to do the right and necessary thing, that burden, burden we own. We are trying to make sure that our children know history and do not, and are a part of a community and a world that does not repeat it again. Right? So I just want to thank you for all of your hard work. I want to thank the community for their feedback. But there is a lot of opportunity for us to take a look. And ninth grade is, you know, next year, it's a pilot, full pilot. And it will come to you by spring of next year, because we have to then purchase materials. And again, last thing I'm going to say, our teachers are creating our curriculum. And they're using a lot of resources. They're going to a lot of training to make sure that this is created well. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna gavel again. We're having a public hearing. Proposal for increasing school facilities fees as authorized by Education Code Section 17620 and Government Code 65995B3. Ms. Kair, do we have any comments? With no comments, I'm going to close this public hearing. 11E is to adopt Resolution 44-2324, increasing school facility fees as authorized by Education Code 17620 and Government Code Section 65995B3.
I'll move adoption.
Oh, we're just gonna go there. Okay, let's do it. Do I got a number two? Do I have a two?
I'll say it.
Wow, so with a second and a first, a first and a second, we're just gonna vote. Student trustee Chilton.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Six to zero. It has passed. Item 11F is to certify the financial condition forward slash second interim report for 2023-2024. I hope it's looking good. Is it looking okay?
We'll see. So here's the second interim report. And this is a really, the last time you received the report was in December. That was the first interim, and now we're in second interim, looking at all the projections all the way through June 30th, as well as actuals as of January 31st. So the summary here, our second interim meets the requirement of positive certification. So that's a good thing. And I will go over that and the reason why it's a positive certification. COLA is a cost of living adjustment, as you know, is 8.22%. This is what the governor is fully funding in the current year. We did update the salaries and benefits as of second interim, first interim. Because it was approved late November, we did not have time to put in the update, the salaries and benefits at that time. So this second interim reflects the salaries and benefits, which is a compensation, because of the compensation increase, totally $8.9 million. And of course, I shared this in January when I gave the information or shared the information about the governor's proposed budget, the difference between LAO and, and the proposed budget. It was a $30 billion projected deficit, but we, we are all hearing. It's actually gone up. I mean, the project, the deficit is actually grew. It grew. So, but, so here's secondary interim, the changes from first interim, first interim and second interim. This is combined unrestricted and restricted. This is from LCFF, additional $658,000. And that's because we did see a slight increase in our attendance rate. And that's the reason why this went up by $658,000. So we're really hoping that that will continue. And when we submit our P2, which is April 15, that, that, that number stays as far as our local control funding formula. Some federal grants did get adjusted, as well as money that we received in addition to the grants that we have. Same with state funds. Local, we always get this every, second interim, that this is actually the, a lot of the money that we're getting from, from donations and fundraising efforts. That's, those are, that's about $1.3 million. This is the makeup of our revenue. This is, you've seen this in first interim. This is an update. We have, we do have $141.2 million total revenue. 112.9, or 80% is unrestricted. And, and that's a list of 112.9. And restricted is $28.4 million. That makes up about 20% of our total revenues. And then, let's go move on to expenditures. Expenditures, as I mentioned, salaries and benefits did go up because of that compensation increase that was approved and, and other adjustments because of the grants that we received, additional funding that we received for restricted, including donations if they wanted to, to, or if they want, if some of our donations are going towards salaries and benefits. Books and supplies adjusted there. Services and other operating expenditures because of our, the, the, about $100,000 of pre-kindergarten planning and implementation, implementation grant, as well as our student behavioral health incentive program. So that is about $10.4 million total change from first interim to second interim. This is the total expenditures. The unrestricted is $94 million, or 59%. And restricted is 41% or $66.4 million. Contribution to restricted funds is 28.21.8 million total. And here's a list, the bulk of it is really is our special ed program. We have, we are required to put in 3% towards our routine restricted maintenance. And then, of course, then we do have a set aside because of the, a lot of, a lot of projects that we've completed because of Measure G. And so with that, we do need to make sure that we are setting aside money to continue to, to repair and, and, and have all of these things, you know, taken care of.
That's mandated, right? That's a certain percentage.
The routine restricted is deferred maintenance is not. So, so this went away, the requirement ran away years ago during the economic downturn. And now, so locally, we wanted this because we want, we want to make sure that we are setting aside money for, to continue taking care of our, you know, projects that, from the Measure G funds. And I do want to note that it's 76.4% is the total expenditures on salaries and benefits. That's combined. For, if you look at unrestricted only, for salaries and benefits, it's 86%. Correct, that's correct. Components of ending fund balance, again, unrestricted and restricted, you'll see how we ended our project, our projection for the year. Our $10.8 million in unrestricted and 3.2 in restricted. So that is about $14.1 million. And of course, you'll see a list of, for restricted, a list of the funds that we do need to set aside because they are restricted. We do have plans to spend them. A good example was the first one listed there, Economic Educator Effectiveness Block Grant. This is a five-year plan that you approved a couple of years ago. And so we continue to, to use this money. So we have another two more years. And that's why it's at $787,000, because we do, we have a list of expenditures for the next, next three more years.
Do we earn a little interest on our reserve? I'm curious about that.
I'm sorry?
On our reserve, do we earn any interest on that?
Yes.
We do?
We do, we do. We have, it's actually sitting at the Alameda County Treasurer's Office. And so they do, they, they invest the money very small. Yes, it's about 2%. And then we have a committed.
We, we cannot put our reserve in anything else. We would.
It's a requirement.
Because we're not getting in. I mean, you're right, we're losing money.
And then.
Talk to our legislature.
Yeah, so, so one of, one of the things that they're actually doing, I know we, we had a meeting at the CBO and at the county level. And they invited Levy, Mark, I forget, Hank Levy, thank you. He did speak, because that was one of the questions about the investment. One of the things that he's asking us is data information, looking at our cash flow, because they want to make sure that there's enough money whenever we need the money to pay payroll and other projects. So he's looking, he's trying to do a better job in, in, in investing. So if we can put it in a long term, instead of the short term, he wants to hear from us. So we will be working, some CBOs are, we're working with them, with their, with his team to look at cash flow, understanding how school districts, when do they need money? What's the peak and, and those things? So hopefully, with the investment that we're seeing now, hopefully there's going to be some changes in the future. Yes.
Harry Howard said you better.
We will let them know, yes. We will share.
But you could do better.
Savings now.
Yes.
Above that.
That's correct.
I mean, put it in a regular savings account at any one of the banks down there. You can draw it out anytime with no penalty.
We will definitely share those comments, yes. Committed funds, you, there's a resolution after this about these two funds, committed funds. And then our reserve right now, as of second interim, is 6.07. Okay. Assumptions for the multi-year, and now we're gonna go into the multi-year. Same thing that you've seen last time, except for the cost of living adjustment in the next year, 0.76. This is, you know, a lot smaller than the 3.94% that we assumed in the budget. So now we've made adjustments to our multi-year projection. And so we, we are, we did reflect the 0.76% in '24, '25, as well as 2.73% in '25, '26. Again, this is due, this is based on the, the governor's proposed budget in January. So that's what we followed. But because of what we're hearing, we will wait until the May revise to see if these numbers are going to stay the way they are or if they're going to be, if they're going to change. And then on the expenditure side, no changes there. Call person, call stars, the rates are the same as of first interim. And then here's our multi-year projection. So I highlighted there, just so for, for your information, the 8.22% this year, a cost of living adjustment, again, 0.76 that we are. Again, point seven six that we are, are using to project next year on our, on our local control funding formula, point seven six and two point seven three in twenty five, twenty six. So all the way, look at all the way at the bottom, where are we because of that change? It's three percent.
So if it were point zero one less, that would be a problem, right?
Yes. I was gonna say in this three percent for next year and the year after, there is no, no, nothing assumed as increase.
That's correct, nothing assumed.
The COLAs are assumed.
No, they could, what I'm saying is it for like.
The revenue.
Increase.
Fair, righto, righto. Trustee Howard, you made a face. Okay, I agree with it.
CBO. The County Office of Education.
Yes.
When we say the county and where it's invested, all of that, we're not talking about the County Office of Education. We're talking about the county treasurer.
Treasurer.
Alameda County. So really, if the, the question and of investment and things like that, it's like the county supervisors.
I mean, it could be worse, we could be in a district with declining enrollment.
And, and we're hearing a lot of like, I mean, the conversations all over the place. Like at the Ed Coalition, it was like, well, what do we do? Do we use the rainy day fund? Then there is nothing left. Do we, you know, is it deferrals? Is it all the different funds that they have set aside like here and there and there? And that hasn't been used, you know, take it all back because people are not applying for those funds. They're not using them because S R funds are going away. And then the other added thing is this new, the lawsuit from, on the state, the state of California was actually, now there's funding and I can't remember how many billions.
So the learning loss is actually, that the lawsuit from parents that, and they won.
Yeah.
So basically what that is, is the, he's banking, he's, he's thinking about the two billion dollars that the learning loss block grant.
God.
That districts are not going to use all that money. And so for us, that grant or block grant, we already had plans to spend it last year, half of last year, half of it last year and half this year. So we're not going to be able to contribute towards that. If other districts do the same thing, then there's no money towards that.
Yeah, so, so he has to come up with it because it's a lawsuit. So how that gets, you know, divided up is actually a conversation. And I think it's, no, in, next week, I'm actually talking, so UCLA, Stewart Foundation, the, the, the two of them have been asked with a couple of other organizations to give the governor and the legislators how that money should be divided. So I'll be at that meeting because of AXA. So they invited me and I, I, I'm meeting with somebody to give them some ideas. To me, we need accountability. But I also want to say you can't, like, S R funds and all of these things are going away. So if you're going to give us money, you have to allow us to do that. If they say you can't supplant, you have to supplement, we can't do it. So I'm going to be real clear about, don't tell us that we can't just pay for things that we are actually are cutting if there's no money. Like, it doesn't make sense to say cut. And then here's some additional money that we had to come up with from somewhere. And now you have to put in new, new things in place.
Essentially using the same pot of money.
And using the same pot of money.
So that he gave us and now say, oh, but we see that you haven't spent it. I will take it back for something else.
Yeah. So, so I'll be very clear about that. Because we actually, you asked us for a plan, we have a plan. So you can't, it's, it's almost like double dipping. It's using the same money for two, for the same thing because there's a lawsuit.
Yes.
At this state.
I feel like trustee Howard's, oh, he pressed his button.
Yeah, I do. This is another aspect of the financial crisis here, I think. And that is, there's an effort now by the governor to restructure the C T E funding and to put it, to essentially gather it from all the various agencies and put it into one. And so those negotiations are going on now. The bad thing is K twelve is almost not involved. It's all the higher education, it's the community colleges and the Cal State group. And it's really hard to know where that, but that could hurt us. It could hurt the R O P quite a bit. So that's one to keep an eye out. I, I hope C S B A will weigh in on that in some way.
It, it's, I, I'm, I'm just looking at the point seven six. And I'm, I'm just going to predict a May revise surprise. I mean, I just, the politics of it, I, that's not sustainable. I, I, he's gonna, the governor's gonna find something. I just, when I think about the election year and his position, I can't see that staying there. I think that would be. I, I mean, I, I'm hoping for iron.
So I guess to your point, that's what concerns us. Because right here, the two point seven three just came up because they've got to balance their budget. So, and a part of the conversation at the Ed Coalition is, like, you can't make these numbers up to make it look good. Because if there's no money. And our problem in California is that we only depend on income and we depend on the income of the richest people.
Well, then, when I think about eight point two two last year, I think it was like, wow, that's amazing. But that was politics, y'all. I mean, it was in response to a high inflationary environment plus, so I, 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 I wish I better understood like how the, 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 what, it's not the L A O, it's the.
Department of Finance.
Yeah, the Department of Finance, how they really calculate. Is, is there transparency in how they go about that? Or is it just sort of like, ooh, number? Kind of a magic number.
They, there's some, some of it.
I see Howard.
Yeah, I was gonna say this during the update and everything, but I'll say it now because it's really applicable to the budget discussion. And that is, in the last couple of weeks, I've been in conversation with Liz Ortega and Tim Grayson and with the office, tonight with the office of Ayesha Wahab. The budget is not a pretty picture. And they, I mean, I'm sad to say, they really didn't offer much. They didn't have any good news. I guess that's the best way to say it. It's unfortunate, but. I think their big advice is to save everything we can this year, everything we possibly can and against next year when we're really needed.
Next slide.
Slide, yes. Other funds, this is a list of all of our funds, revenue and expenditures and their ending balances. So you're seeing, you know, quite a bit of it. And that's because of, we, we have in Fund Thirty Five, some money that we did receive for the, you know, the good work that our facilities department is doing and applying for Prop fifty one funds. So we did receive those funds in the current year. So that's why you're seeing four million dollars there, because that's actual cash that we received, which is great. That add, really added to our, our, our fund balance, twenty two points, almost twenty two point seven million dollars. And then the next steps, zero-based budgeting, we will present that in April. And then, of course, then we'll hear more about the May revise. And then in June, we have the L cap and also the budget hearings and adoptions. Any questions?
I would like to move approval. You have a question?
No. Is there a second?
A second.
Wow, that was a tie. That was a tie. First goes. Can we split it among all three?
One, three.
Okay, well, Dolly. Okay, so let's, let's vote, let's do some voting. Student trustee Chilton.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond. Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
And Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Let's just go to our next one, which was referenced in our previous item. Approved Resolution forty five dash twenty three forward slash twenty four, designating certain general funds as committed fund balance for twenty twenty three dash twenty four. Do we want to just go and just get a first?
I'm over the phone.
Oh, we got a first and second. Student Board Member Chilton.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond. Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trust, Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Excellent. Let's go on to the Personnel Report, which I know was amended.
I'll move to approve the Personnel Report as amended.
And I'm looking at you for number two.
I would be happy to second that.
Excellent. Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
Excellent, we have approved, oh, I said yes to, I'm gonna say yes. I said yes. We have approved our Personnel Report. We have another item. Vote for the twenty twenty four California School Board Association Delegate Assembly. I'm assuming we have some information to present to the board about this.
And I wanted to say something also before we.
It's actually included, so they have two people, but they're, they don't have sufficient numbers of, so you can go ahead and.
Can we nominate?
Board can actually nominate somebody.
So who do we have on there? Can we confirm who's on there, sorry? And I know April Okenda.
I, I think April had emailed or texted. Usually we get emails from different board members from other places saying that they want to, if you want to vote for them, or you can leave it the way it is, but you can actually make a motion. Huh?
How, how many can we as a board?
I, four, four, so you can have two.
Okay, I move to nominate, okay.
One at a time.
Yes.
Would nominate Dolly Adams.
Add second.
Great, do we have to vote on it or can I do another?
We have to vote on it.
Let's vote on that. A student trustee Chilton.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond. Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I would like to nominate April Okenda from the Hayward Unified School District Board of Trustees.
I would like second.
Whoa, wow. I'll give that one to trustee Raymond. Okay, so we have a one and a two, let's, let's vote. Student Board Member Chilton.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And then I'm a yes. And then for the other ones, can we do that as one motion? How do we do the other two?
Those two are.
So now I would ask, can we like vote on all four?
On all four.
Okay, so those were accepting the nominations of those first two, right? Okay, so now I would move that we, we.
Or you could, I mean, it, it's up to you. You don't have to approve everybody.
I don't know either of those two, so I would prefer we not vote on them.
Oh, wow, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm with.
Yeah.
Anything over there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
If, if you don't want to, you don't have to, you just, and that's why you added, because you had people who were interested.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Statements were in the.
Yeah.
I, I read them and I researched those, like as if I were voting, yeah.
Yes, trustee Howard.
Yeah. We never have voted on them in the past, but I have a second thought about.
Oh, let's hear it, let's hear it.
And that is, you know, these are a couple of people who are willing to go up there to Sacramento and put in some time to work for C S B A. I mean, I'm, with no pay and I don't know, maybe some grief occasionally, I'm not sure of it. You know, in that sense, I, I think we all have some degree of empathy for people who are willing to stand up and be voted on occasionally.
So bad feeling. Trustee Whitaker, you're thinking.
I already said what I was thinking.
Fair enough, fair enough. Trustee Raymond, do you have something to say? No? Okay. Okay, so I'm sorry, what would the action be?
The action.
You already took action on the two you wanted to add. You're, you're just not nominating or voting for the other two. They're still there because they were there, you just don't have enough information unless you want to.
I mean, I was really moved by your speech, trustee Howard. No, I'm, no, I'm serious, I'm not, that's not, it's, it's legit.
So you could actually say what, whatever you want to say.
Yeah, I'm gonna go on, I'm going to go on a limb here and say, I would propose that the two nominees that reached out to us, we, we, we nominate them. So, okay, so I'm a one, you, you're the two. Let's all vote. Student Board Member Chilton.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Say no.
I, I hear you. Trustee Howard. Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And then I'm a yes. It passes five to one.
Ooh, we had.
Okay, let us now go to Board Member Comments forward slash Reports. Student Board Member Chilton, you got anything else for us?
Don't think so.
You haven't planned anything from the start of the meeting until now.
But you know what? I've just been thinking about dinner.
Okay, I, you and me, kid.
But the outsiders is this weekend.
Oh, yeah, that's the next play. What days is that? Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
Friday, Saturday and Sunday, I, is it two weekends? Okay, is it not? It's two weekends, that's why, okay.
Is there a certain former student board member who's in it in any way?
Know what? Quinton did not even audition, but he did get a role. So he's in it.
That's some privilege right there.
Miss Daley was like, you're doing it.
Wow.
So.
Former student board member privilege.
Yeah, he was like, I don't know why I'm in the play, but I guess I'm doing it.
That's great.
Yeah, you, you'll see him in there.
Okay, trustee Raymond.
And I'll just add that a current board member's son is on stage crew. That would be my son. So, so I was also going to pitch attendance outsiders or up, yeah, um, over the next couple of weekends. Other than that, I don't really have anything else to contribute tonight. I've been very busy with some personal stuff, so. That's all I've got for right now.
Very good.
We'll be finishing up my Masters in Governance however this weekend, so look out.
Yes.
I have not represented the board, but I look forward to hearing upcoming items that are coming that we need to know about.
Very good.
I was at the Eden Area R O P meeting last week. We do have a new Board, Governing Board Member from Hayward. It's Peter.
Oh, Buffete.
President, I forgot, I can never remember.
Oh, he's delightful, he's delightful.
Yeah, he's a nice guy, yeah. So he's, he didn't make it to the last meeting, but he will be joining us in the future. And I wanted to give a little bit of good news, and that is that Eden Area R O P received three big grants recently, and they're, they're really a big deal. They're apprenticeship grants, so they're really moving big time into pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeships. And this is a game changer really for the students over there. There's one in careers in education, it's a pre-apprenticeship. And in dental assisting, there's a pre-apprenticeship and an apprenticeship. And their dental assisting apprentice, dental assisting program is already spectacular. They have essentially a hundred percent that pass their state boards and they all get hired after that. It's, they have done that for years over there. It's a spectacular program. So a lot of good things coming out of there. Yesterday had a very good visit to Creekside. I know this is on our minds a good bit and, but it was a really good visit and I got to talk to a number of the teachers over there. And finally, I mentioned before, just, I, I was just with C S B A and on a Zoom call with Senator Wahab's office about the budget at four fifteen today, thanks to Amy, who was able to help me get on. And what can I say? Anyway, that's all I have, thanks.
Vice President Adams.
Okay, well, I tried to get onto that meeting to, I, I, with Ayesha Wahab and I couldn't, it didn't go through. It said the host hasn't started this meeting. So I did not get to go on to that. But yesterday or whatever, I, I went on a couple of other C S B A legislative week.
But yesterday or whatever, I I went on a couple of other CSBA Legislative Week meetings. The first one, I think they put me in the wrong place because it was with Rebecca Baller-Kahn. But I just spoke anyway because it doesn't matter, she's still a legislator. And she may not be mine, but I could still advocate for the different things that they were asking us to advocate for. I don't know if anybody's online or not, but mostly it was about really about the integrity of Proposition 98 and sustaining existing programs as opposed to starting any new ones. The one that I spoke on both times I was speaking was the fourth item, which was about the placing a public school facilities bond. Because I know we have finished our bond and we're going to need money for facilities. So I thought that that one was the most important really one to us. There's another proposal for a office of small school districts, that is, that have less than 2,500 students. And then because they need some help with facilities and construction because they're so small. And then one other thing, SB 1315 by Archuleta, reducing the number of reports. So they want to do a report on reducing the number of reports, but
It's very meta.
Yes, it's very. But I and that's something that should pass because it doesn't cost any money, right? I mean, there's a little bit, I guess, doing the study, but it wouldn't, certainly wouldn't cost a lot of money to do that.
It may appreciate, I appreciate that. UC, we have a committee on committees and a policy on policies.
Right, right. It's like
I love that.
Yeah, yeah, it is really ironic. Yeah. And then the other thing that I did is I went to the Alameda County CSBA on February 29th. I spoke to Ayesha Knowles, who's the president there. And then there's also Penny Peck from San Lorenzo, who I like a lot. I think she's really great. I know her from League of Women Voters and those sorts of things. So I think I really only went to three things, but I tried to go to four. Yeah.
The the meeting with Ayesha Wahab was done through somebody else, not through the district, so I don't
Right.
I don't know why you weren't able to get it.
I don't, it's Alameda, it's called Alameda County CSBA.
Yeah.
So and and she's the president of that organization. And then I think Penny Peck is the secretary or something like that. And there, I'm going to that because maybe I might be running for one of those offices. So when they go next time, okay? So if you go, come vote for me. Yeah. And and then if I was an officer and you were the representative from here, we would have like two, two voting people. Should be cool.
Take it over.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you have anything else? I mean, we I know, I know. Well, I I I am, I'm mindful that we did. I did, I am mindful that we did have a conversation about our upcoming Governance Board Workshop. So how about you make us some
It's on Saturday and we'll start Saturday, the 30th of March. And we should be done by 11:30, 12.
Okay.
And then we'll, I shared with you, we're going to send you some things ahead of time.
We're gonna have homework.
Do you're gonna have homework, a little bit of homework, and we'll send it to you as soon as we can so that you can have some time. Looking forward to it.
I I don't have anything that I've done on behalf of the board. I just have a lot of things that are just like kind of weighing on me and the community. One thing I want to just mention is that there's an opening on the Castor Valley Municipal Advisory Council, our appointed council to that that provides advice to the Board of Supervisors. I would note it has seven members on of it, on it, six of whom are male, one is a woman, only one person of color. I certainly hope that there are folks in our community who will stand up and apply for a position on there. People that don't look like me or identify as male. We need the diversity of our community represented in that form. I will say, I I appreciate trustee Howard, what you said about Creekside and visiting them. I I just I want our our school district to be welcoming to all. And it's right there. That's our heart right there, our strategic directions. And I want to thank the fantastic work of our of our district staff in in supporting that and stepping up in moments when we need to step up. I've got to say, student mental health is really weighing on me a lot lately. And I was really grateful for Redwood High School's presentation tonight. And I want everyone here to know, I will always be an advocate and a very loud voice to ensure that we do the right thing by our kids. And while COVID is a real thing, it's a mental health crisis that we're all facing in this country. And I hope that this board will stay committed to that. I do want to acknowledge, I wasn't here at the last meeting. I was visiting with my grandmother. She passed away last night, Helena Bernier. She was 99 and I'm grateful that I had the opportunity to see her and just hold her hand. One thing that really struck me about her, and I know you all have heard me, and I know I'm way too not regulated when it comes to my emotions. Her life was very much connected to my mom's life. And I'll probably be heading to Central Florida next week to be with my family and have some pooch, as my uncle likes to call it. He makes some homemade peach moonshine, which is really good. So sorry, I know we're a public school, I shouldn't be talking about those things. But, you know, I was thinking about what a wonderful thing that someone gets to live to be 99. And I'm reflecting now like, it's Ramadan, right? And for many in our community, this is an important thing. I'm not religious at all. But I grew up in a very religious environment and I appreciate what it means to fast, what it means to sacrifice, you know? Those are acts that that represent something. And it saddens me to think that there's children in this world right now who, they're not fasting, they're starving. And I certainly hope in this moment that we find ourselves that I think about what we do in our district barbeque. I think about how we put kids in the center of what we do. I think there's some 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 people in power in Palestine and in Israel and around the world. If they thought about the interest of our kids, maybe we wouldn't be having kids starving in Palestine right now. And so I I do want to wish Ramadan Mubarak to all. And I hope that we find peace and delight. And I just want to say thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.